Good morning. Want to call to order the special meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for February 22nd, 2017. And thank you everybody who's joined with us this morning. And with that, I'll ask Flo to call to roll. Please establish your quorum.
Good morning Supervisors. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast, Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Monday, February 27th at 8:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Okay, thank you Flo. Steve Kellner, tell me, would you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Steve. Okay, Mr. Gill.
We have one item which is ratification of another local state of emergency. Steve Kellner is here to answer any questions. We declared an emergency from February 2nd until February 16th. Basically, it's flooding in the South County area and also in other parts of the county. So if there's any questions that the board has, Steve's here to answer them. We're asking you to ratify this so we can pass it on to the state and the state ratifies it, pass it on to the federal government.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Turn my colleagues just a moment. I had one question that, and we were chatting about this beforehand, Steve, and it kind of pertains to the ability for people to either recover and/or to reimburse for both damages incurred outside of those that might be covered by private insurance coverage. But again, when we have communities that have sustained in some cases now, you know, three flooding events and in a lot of cases, two, and again, whether it's been once, twice, or three times, it certainly has its impact on people's daily lives, but also on property, on business activities, on farming activities. And I guess I was expressing a bit of frustration that, you know, even with this declaration and with a concurrent declaration by the governors, assuming that happens with this particular event as it did in January, and then a presidential declaration to follow, that it doesn't really mean a lot of relief and it relates to economic recovery. And so maybe you could just take just a moment to, if you can go on record again, for anybody's watching this from any of the affected communities or affected individuals as to what might be available. It sounds like it's very, very limited and a bit of frustration when we continue to, you know, endure this, you know, on several occasions this winter, so.
Okay. Good morning Board Chair and Board Members. My name's Stephen Kellner. I'm the Director's, or the Chief of the Sacramento County Office of Emergency Services. And to your question regarding any type of assistance that may be available to individuals, essentially the federal government is the only location or only place that you can go for any type of individual assistance. They call it IA. And only the President can make that available. In our current situation, the President made available the, under the Stafford Act, many of the programs for local government, but he has not made anything available for the individual assistance. So private property owners right now are not covered or have no ability to recover any costs or to get even small business loans at this point in time. It could change, but I don't think it's likely.
So even small business loans are not available at this point in time?
Right now, it's not.
Okay. And when it relates to local governments, when you look at, you know, just what's occurred over the last several weeks, I mean, roads throughout this county alone, where there's been washouts that have occurred and some emergency reactions, I can certainly speak to them in the South County, but I trust a bit elsewhere in the county as well. And then, you know, anyone who's had occasion to drive in recent days knows the potholes. And so what about reconstruction? Again, you know, it, some of this has been, you know, majorly accelerated by rains and then the normal traffic that those roads bear. And I guess I'm curious how much of that's going to be recoverable potentially and what sort of documentation. Again, I want to certainly thank, you know, Mike Penrose and Reza Magisi and all the folks from all the various utility staffs with the county, but for their responsiveness. What's it look like going forward this summer season for as far as repairs beyond just putting asphalt in a pothole?
Well, we did have considerable damage, mostly to the south part of the county. And most of that is eligible or potentially eligible for some recovery costs and for either repairing or replacing those damaged things. For roads, for example, bridges or any other type of infrastructure. And we did have FEMA out, just, well, we had about twice now. We had them out yesterday was the last one that came out. And we went over all the damage assessment, which totaled around $15 million for Sacramento County.
Fifty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen million. And we're still getting damage assessments in, so that number's going to change, either up or down. And they will continue to come in. But what FEMA is going to do is they'll open up an applicant briefing session where they'll come to Sacramento, open up an office, and have all those that suffered any type of damages that are eligible under the Stafford Act to come into that applicant briefing. And they'll discuss the options that are available. They'll be requesting all the documentation of the damage, whatever the repair costs were, and pictures is what they like to see. So that, I'm not sure when that will be started, but I would guess within the next 30 days, 30 to 60 days. Up until that point, there is no funding available, so any repairs that are done would be done by the county or the cities or special districts on their own. And then they would submit for reimbursement and hopefully get reimbursed for their damages.
When we, you know, get to sunnier days and warmer weather, I trust you'll then have a, whether it's you Steve or Nell, I think, a session where, again, the assessment has been made, but also I think particularly with the road infrastructure and any other damages that have occurred certainly to, you know, county maintained utilities after water lines and other things that were damaged, to know what that looks like. Because again, if it's just filling potholes, that's not, you know, I don't think it's going to get it. We're not going to, you know, we'll be in much worse shape come next, next winter season if we don't make repairs in some of that, you know, the road infrastructure.
I did talk to Transportation, I talked to Reza yesterday about some of the damages. And he did say that they had some considerable damages from the second storm as well. The meetings with FEMA were in regard to the January storm.
January, okay.
Yeah. And so that same process is going to be started for the February storms as well. But Reza did mention that he had considerable damages, mostly with shoulders of the roads down there. And there's still a lot of it that's underwater, so they can't estimate the damages at this time.
And we will see an item then in March on the Point Pleasant, the whole discussion about their ability to flood fight, and they've taken it three times. And we're going to have an item for a March 7th agenda, is that right, to have a whole assessment of that situation now? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. All right, Mr. Serna and others, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve, you may have made reference to this already, but what is the length of time following a storm event that we, by making this declaration, would be eligible for financial assistance? So for instance, let's say, you know, an apron or a runway buckles because of recent storms at our international airport, but that happens three months from now, but it can be, it's obvious that it's attributable to a particular storm event or series of storm events. How much, what's the statute of limitations on that?
Well, there really isn't a statute of limitations on it, but the further you are removed from the actual dates of the incident, the less likely you're going to be reimbursed for it. It doesn't mean you won't, and it should be reported, and the damage assessment should be made and forwarded to us, and we would forward it on through Calo A.S. and FEMA. So oftentimes, these things happen, especially when you have major damage. You don't know what all that damage is until much later after the incident. So my recommendation to anyone that has damage two, three, four months down the road, and they can attribute it to the storms, they need to document it and get it to me as soon as they can.
Okay, but that doesn't necessarily require another action like this at that time?
No, no. If it's going to be eligible, it will be eligible under our proclamation.
Okay.
And we will continue to ask for a 30-day extension, the one in January we brought to you last board meeting. We'll continue doing with this until the point that Steve determines that we have gotten all the damage control, damage items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other members of the board?
Did he have a presentation?
Oh, Steve, do you want to run through your presentation?
I do have a, I do have a PowerPoint if you want to see it. It's primarily pictures of some of the damage. I also have a map that I'd like to start with.
I think it goes either way, doesn't it?
It's very difficult, it's very difficult to put the maps into the PowerPoint because the size of the maps, because they're such a large area, reducing them down to fit into a PowerPoint, it really, you can't see anything in it. So I brought this map. This one is still difficult to see as well. I do have hard copies if you'd like to have those. But it--
Could you put it right side up so we could read the words?
There you go.
Possibly read the words.
Good, good reading maps, Ms. Peters. That's good.
Daughter of an engineer.
So this is what the county, along with RD 800, put together for a visual of the damages that they have suffered down in the Wilton area. As you can see, there's a lot of levee repairs or levee repairs that need to be done, or boils that are still existing there. RD 800 probably got hit the hardest of all the RDs out there, although some of the other ones were hit really pretty hard too, especially Tyler Island. But this is a pretty good visual of what exactly they had to deal with over the last two storms.
Steve, they're having a community meeting, and I know that certainly I'll be invited. They've already reached out on that, but I've indicated I'm going to ask staff to attend. They're looking at it a couple of weeks out, I think. So you and somebody from Transportation, probably somebody from--
Maybe DWR.
Yeah, DWR for Water Resources would be good to have all of you there. There's going to be a lot of questions, I'm sure, about, you know, repairs, you know, maybe some sorting out of what transpired. And it may not be, might be even the opportunity to have some from Sheriff's Office as to how evacuations were, you know. And again, I want to compliment you on the call system. I think certainly has worked much more smoothly since the first conversation we had. And I think that's certainly given an alert to folks, obviously, what, you know, what they should contemplate under voluntary conditions or if there was mandatory, which, you know, those are a different call. But, so they're looking, I think, mid-March for a community meeting out of Wilton. And I imagine it'll be pretty well attended, so I would invite you and others. And hopefully we have a little more direction from FEMA about things as well.
Hopefully.
How about the RD though? They incurred, you know, I know, probably close to half million dollars in costs in these, and I saw some pictures, I don't know if you have them included in your packet, but of some of the boils and other things, washes that occurred.
We could take a look at the PowerPoint.
Yeah, run through, go ahead, continue then, yeah.
So some of the impacted areas, this is not a total list of the areas that were impacted. It's just a representative of them. For Realinda had the same areas that typically flood, the Curve Bridge near Elkhorn, Cherry Lane, Sixth Street near, north of Elkhorn, and then Ascot Road around Fourth Street. There were other areas in Wilton, or excuse me, in Realinda that also had flooding, but these were the primary ones and the ones that typically fled every time we get a storm. In the Wilton area, it was much larger swath than what we see there, but we had Dillard Road near Peach, Green Road in Wilton and Dillard, Dillard and 99 north of Riley, Peach Lane north of Dillard and boils along the levee. As you saw on that map, there was about six or seven of them, I believe, in the Wilton area. And then Point Pleasant, the entire, pretty much the entire community of Point Pleasant was affected. And we had flooding at Hood Franklin Road west of I-5, Lambert Road west of Franklin, Twin Cities between Bruceville and Christiansen, New Hope Road west of Cost and Franklin Field. And then we had, as you know, the partial evacuation of the R-triple-C. If you're familiar with that area, the water can come from many different directions, and so it's very difficult to really guess whether or not the flooding is going to reach the R-triple-C or how far it will go north, or what extent it will, it will go, even east and west. In this case, the February storm got closer to R-triple-C than the January storm did, but yet the water flow at Benson Ferry, which affects that in that area, didn't go as high. So it's really hard, it's really hard to gauge whether or not the R-triple-C is going to be affected by it. But we know that it's going to be somewhere around 20 feet is kind of our rule of thumb at the gauge of Benson Ferry. As you can see, here's the Wilton map. It's an earth shot. It's very difficult to see from there, you know, what the, I tried to get it as high resolution as I could, but you have to take the pixels down, and so you really can't see a whole lot. Same with the Point Pleasant. I really can't even identify it from here where the areas are. I can see Twin Cities is at the bottom. You see the road that has a kind of a jaunt in it going from right to left. That's Twin Cities, and that's kind of the southern end of the county that was affected. And then north of that, where you see the, kind of the yellow line going straight, straight up, I believe that's I-5, I think. It might be 99, I can't, can't And here's some of the pictures, Consumers between Dillard Road and Highway 99. These look pretty much like the January storms. The Consumers River, this is just an aerial shot from helicopters. Here's Dillard east of Highway 99. And here's some overtopping on Green Road in Wilton. Green Road is another road that frequently floods and probably gets some of the highest heights of the flooding comes through Green Road. It's kind of a low point there. Franklin Lambert Road, so we're getting close to the R-triple-C. Here's a picture of Tyler Island. On the right side, on the right levee side of that, about midway down is where that levee repair took place. It was a significant damage to that levee. The RD there did a great job in doing a flood fight and saving that. If you go to the very tip on the, the top of it, that is where they typically get water coming in from the tracks above it, like the McCormick Williamson Track. That's where they were expecting to have water come through, but the levee held, and so they didn't have that issue. Here's the, a picture of the damage on Tyler Island's levee. It was basically slipping away towards the dry side. And this is a picture of the construction work they were doing there. They brought in rock and put a big ring around that and built it up to put pressure on that side of the levee to strengthen it.
Looks like you had a big audience there.
There was a lot, the media was out there for almost the entire time. And Matt Robinson from DWR stood out there for hours and hours and hours dealing with the media. He did a great job. And this is just a picture on the American River where Sunrise Bridge, pedestrian bridge is supposed to be. It's underwater there, so you can't--
Have you seen any damage? It probably, river hasn't been probably low enough to see if there's any damage.
No, not yet, yeah. Can't tell. And then these are just some of the reasons of the justification for proclamations. We exceeded our, our resource capability within the county. And that could be either, you know, personnel or, or rock or any type of resource that we might need, including financial resources. And it also, you could also proclaim when it exceeds the resource capabilities of your cities or special districts. So you would, if the county didn't incur as much damage, like for example, we didn't incur as much as some of the reclamation districts had, but we can do that in support of them to help them potentially get funding from the state through CDAA or through the federal government through the Stafford Act.
One question.
Sorry?
I didn't see any pictures or you didn't make any comments about Arcade Creek. And is that part of your purview?
It is. We, it's part of the things we monitor.
Okay. So one of the areas that always floods in situations like this is Winding Way near American River College there at the back.
Right.
And I couldn't get through the other day, so I couldn't really tell what was going on. And I haven't been back. Have, have you been back since the water went down to see?
No, we have not. We were there when it, when it rose. We went and took a look at it, but I haven't been back since it's gone down. I've been told it has gone down and it's passable now.
Yeah, it seems to, so the road damage there's got to be probably extensive. Is that something that could be funded?
Yeah, that's included in our damage estimates.
It is, okay.
Yes. The entire county, including that, and if you're probably familiar with the mobile home area that's over off of Auburn Boulevard.
Yeah.
That always floods, and that's also eligible as well.
Okay. So are those specific things called out, or is it, I mean, how does that work on these, you know, smaller geographical areas? On your emergency proclamation, just, does it say Winding Way at Walnut Avenue?
It doesn't need to be that specific.
Or does it say roads in general?
It just, every, our proclamation is for any damage that may have occurred in Sacramento County.
Oh, that's, that's the word you use, any damage? Okay. Well, then how do you just, do you put in for an amount of money?
What we do is we, we send teams out there to do estimates on the damage. They assess it, they write it up, they forward it to us, and then we put it on a spreadsheet and forward it all to Calo A.S. and FEMA.
So most of the work starts after the event on that side. So that's what his teams are out, Water Resources, Transportation, other folks that assist him. So they'll feed all the information in Steve's office. They'll look at it and then pass it on to the state.
Okay.
It's all categorized on the spreadsheet so that you can go to each individual location. And it'll have a slight or a short description of the damage and then the cost for repairs.
So when it comes to roads, does the water have to have overtopped the road, or is it--
No, not necessarily.
The pothole situation in general?
Potholes are, are things that FEMA doesn't like to fund because they feel--
Oh, what a surprise.
Yeah. Well, they feel it's road maintenance, normal road maintenance. But that doesn't mean it's not eligible. And so all the potholes have been categorized and forwarded to FEMA.
Okay, thank you.
And Supervisor Peter, sometimes it does take some time going back and forth with FEMA. Steve does that for us, that they will come back, deny it, we'll go back and say, hey, can you relook at it?
Okay.
And it takes a while to get, get the money back into the county.
Do you, do you visit Washington DC?
No, no, they come out here.
Oh, they come out here. Oh, so you take them on a tour?
They set up a field office.
Yeah, we take it on two tours so far, and I expect to take them on a lot more.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, talk about the field office.
The what?
The field office they set up.
Yeah, the, they'll set up that, when they do the briefing, they'll set up an office and they'll have all the people that submitted some damages, their IDEs, initial damage estimates. They will come to that office and then they'll go over the whole process and all the options that they may have to recover some of their costs.
I remember we did that when Woodside and several other apartments around, Woodside flooded at Howe and North Rock.
Right.
Some years ago, yeah. FEMA set up a tent or something.
Right. Last time, in 97, they set up an office on Folsom Boulevard. So they expected to be here a long time. I don't know whether they'll do the same thing here. They may just come to our EOC and use that or another facility that we might make available to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Could I just ask a question, Steve? Is there an instruction sheet, again, you know, I know that some of us, not just in community meetings, but in interactions with folks, again, the very limited ability for individual assistance, but for folks that have had damages on their private property, I'm thinking, again, some farmers that I know I'll be meeting with here in the next few days, information, again, you know, and I've given some information about documenting, pictures and so forth, but do they need to get ahold of the Ag Commissioner? Do they need to submit the information at least through your offices so that we have documentation? A brief information sheet that would be available that we could, you know, give out and/or if it's on our website as well, I think that would be helpful so we know. Because again, this isn't just all governmental. Maybe there's a chance that some, they'll say that, you know, small business assistance loans and/or some, you know, other opportunities for people to seek some, you know, reimbursement for costs that they either incur and/or damages. I think it'd be helpful to have that. And so whether you're talking with a homeowner, a property owner, business owner, whatever, to have that.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find some more information on that. I have looked before, and they do have some very small little snippets of information. There's not a whole lot.
Well, let's put something together that's understandable. Again, I would just say to Nell, I mean, task you with, put something that's understandable that for county residents, whether you live in cities or in county, if you've, you know, if this is what's happened on your place, or your place of business, or your farm, or, you know, to levees in your area or fences, whatever, here's how you can document that. And what, we don't give a promise of, you know, some false promises, someone's going to be coming down the pipe. But I just, otherwise you give them to some FEMA website back in Washington DC and good luck navigating that. You know, you give up before you get through it. So, so let's see if we can put something together that's understandable, please.
Sure.
And maybe the phone number if it's yours or ours, you know, the local office or the Ag Commissioner or Water Resources or whoever, so DOT.
Okay.
The, what I remember about Woodside some years ago is, I just have to say, don't get your hopes up. What they wanted to do was to raise everything 20 feet. And the homeowner association had to pay for part of that, and they weren't interested in doing that. And the people didn't want to be out of their places that long, so.
No, you're right. They were looking to put a, like a retaining wall all the way around the Woodside.
Yeah.
And it would have to be pretty high.
And raise certain units, yeah.
Right.
So sometimes they're extremely practical, but not, not always doable.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody, staff, the EOC as well. Thanks to everybody who staffed the EOC as well. People have called in for some long, long duty on that.
I'd move the staff recommendation.
All right. Second to approve the staff recommendation and the resolutions outlined. If nothing further, I'd no one sign up to speak, please vote.
Steve, thank you and your crews for all their hard work.
Thank you.
Late hours. Unanimous vote.
And we did have one off agenda item?
Do. Hang on one sec.
Flo?
We do, I'm sorry. I had to do some technical stuff here. Okay, for your off agenda matter, I do need a motion to determine the necessity to hear it, and then I'll need a separate motion to adopt the resolution. It's a resolution commending Joyce Link, 2016-17 President, International Association of Rebecca Assemblies.
Okay. I would move the necessity here.
Second.
Okay, move second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And I would move resolution, we got late notice on this. She's a local resident, but she was the international president of the Rebecca Assemblies, and there's a presentation this Saturday, so we'll get that circulated to Board Members. I'd move the item.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Board member comments, Kenny Zek?
No, sir.
Board member comments? If not, again, thanks for bringing us in the special section. Thank you Flo, and we will adjourn.